Good evening and welcome to the December 11th, 2024 special meeting of the Roseville City Council. Call the meeting to order and I'll ask the city clerk to call the role.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Here. I'd like to ask Chief Barti if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Barti, we've all said it, but I want to publicly say it on behalf of the city council. Thank you for your service as you head toward retirement. Thank you for not only your service to the city of Roseville, but also on your special teams throughout the country to help people overcome natural disasters. I'll ask the city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city of Roseville's regular city council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table on the right or also online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the city council and not to any member of the public or staff. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For items that are not on the agenda, members of the public may address the city council regarding any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda, and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of our city council. Public comments will be limited to 25 minutes for the first segment, and each speaker will be provided with three minutes to express their comments. If the time limitation is reached in the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity to address the city council at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our city council from discussing, debating, or taking actions on items that are not listed on the agenda. For those items that are appearing on tonight's agenda, the speaker will have five minutes to provide input that shall be relevant to the item that is being presented. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the city council, please consider stating your name for the record. Without, we welcome you to the city of Roseville.
Thank you very much, Carmen. We'll start with presentations and item 5.1, which is the canvas of results for the 2024 municipal election, and I'll ask our city clerk, Carmen Avalos, to make the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you so very much. So, tonight we have the canvas of elections, which for our election that took place on November 5th, 2024. So, as a brief background on our election, on June 19th, 2024, our city council adopted Resolution 24-234, calling for the Rosevilles' general municipal election to fill vacancies for members of our city council. The election cycle began with three of the five Roseville districts up for election. The vacancies existed in districts 1, 3, and 5. The nomination period began on July 15th and ended August 9th, 2024. On August 9th, at the close of the nomination period, only one candidate was nominated for each of District 1 and also one for District 3. Tracy Mendoza was nominated to serve a four-year term in District 1, and Bruce Haldishell was nominated to serve a four-year term in District 3. Pursuant to the Elections Code 10-229, on August 21st, 2024, at our regular city council meeting, the city council received the city clerk's certification of facts and adopted Resolution 24-234, which provided for appointments for members of the city council in District 1 and 3. At that time, the city council voted to appoint Tracy Mendoza as council member in District 1 and Bruce Haldishell as council member in District 3. The general municipal election for District 1 and 3 was therefore canceled. That allowed the city to save approximately $50,000 that would not be spent from its general fund. The election in District 5 did proceed, with five candidates having qualified for the ballot. In District 5, the following candidates received the highest number of votes and is declared council member and vice mayor-elect per the Elections Code and Roseville Charter. In District 5, the council member with the highest votes was Karen Alverd, receiving 9,518 votes, or 49% of the vote. Tonight, we're asking the city council to please adopt and consider adopting Resolution 24-398, canvassing votes of the November 5th, 2024 general municipal election, and declaring the results thereof per Placer County official election results, and declaring the council member, vice mayor-elect Karen Alverd for District 5 as a candidate receiving the highest number of votes in that district, and also administering the official oath of office to the incoming council member, vice mayor for District 5, and the appointed council members in District 1 and 3 respectively, as prescribed in Elections Code 10-265 and 10-229. If there, that concludes my presentation, unless the council has questions.
Unless the council has any questions about this, I will open it for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment and ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 5.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-398, canvassing votes of the November 5th, 2024 general municipal election, and declaring the results thereof per Placer County official elections results, and declaring the vice mayor-elect and council District 5 Karen Alverd as the candidate receiving the highest number of votes cast in her district. And also, after the adoption of the resolution, that the official oath of office be administered to the incoming council members for Districts 1, 3, and 5 respectively. With that, may, do you want to?
Sound moved?
Second.
So, I have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll do our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously.
Before we move to the next portion of our agenda, as with each agenda, we have an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment, public comment on non-agenda items? Please come to the podium. There, up there. Oh.
There's one behind you.
Is this Father Cliff, is this on non-agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, go.
I just wanted to, I'm Father Cliff Hagens, I'm the rector of St. John's in Roseville here. All I wanted to do was simply congratulate those who have been elected or appointed to the positions, but most importantly, to say thank you to council member Alverd. I have watched you through the years that you have served this community. You have given it your all. You have been available time and time and time again to not only the members of our church and to myself, but the members of our community, and I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Father Cliff. And let me, you, you served as a wonderful example, as you often do. That is an agenda item tonight, so we would take those comments on that agenda item when we get to it. Is this on a non-agenda item?
Yes. Hi, everybody. My name is Kulvinder Singh. I've been a resident now for 20, almost 21 years of Roseville. On Saturday, the Carnegie Library, the Roseville Historical Society is having an open house. They have a newsletter. I've contributed an article. So, when you all come or you look for the newsletter, you will see an article about six and their firsts in Placer County. So, that's all I wanted to say. Happy holidays.
I saw another hand, and I just want to make sure that it is about, it's on a non-agenda item.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishell and council members. My name's Denal Collins, and I'm here to address the behavior of council member Alverd and our concerns regarding the gathering in facility in Lincoln. Recently, our group peacefully protested a TGI fundraiser to highlight their lack of transparency and partnership with our city. Afterwards, Mr. Alverd chose to mock us on social media, posting pictures, calling our efforts silly, unwise, a waste of time, touting how our protests helped them raise more money than ever while playing Montel Jordan's song "This Is How We Do It" in the background. Not only is this unprofessional as an elected official, but extremely disrespectful to Lincoln residents and our school district who are dealing with this serious public safety matter. TGI's plan for 100-bed low-barrier respite shelter next to schools and senior housing is deeply troubling to those that know the facts. Maybe you don't know the facts, Mr. Alverd. Public safety data shows that 80% of homeless served at low-barrier shelters are on parole, probation, or have criminal backgrounds. They won't be primarily frail elderly guests, as TGI claims. According to recent point-in-time data, there are very few unsheltered elderly in Placer County, less than 20. TGI's respite shelters will have the capacity to serve over 800 guests per year. That would mean at least 95% of those served would actually be age 18 to 50. This will not resemble senior living as was there before. They'll offer drug rehab and services for seriously mentally ill. Sobriety's not a requirement, and guests are allowed to come and go and have visitors. And this is in a neighborhood one block from a middle school. This council was worried about a 30-bed facility being too big, not needed, and in the wrong location. No wonder TGI chose to blindside Lincoln. This is something none of you would want to happen in your city. It's clearly too big, not needed, and in the wrong location. We don't even have 800 unsheltered homeless in the entire county. There are only 366 total, and all of those won't end up in a hospital needing respite care. In my career as a financial controller, my focus is always on numbers and their accuracy, and this just doesn't add up. The clear lack of need in Placer County for this size of facility suggests they'll bring people in from outside the county, significantly straining local resources and compounding shelter needs long-term. Although TGI alleges you must be from Placer County, be a Placer County resident, who would enforce this? And you can become a resident while in the hospital. Being able to bill upwards of $1,000 a day per guest for non-medical care, you know these beds won't sit empty. TGI's inconsistent messaging, lack of transparency, and an apparent profit-driven approach undermines public trust and has permanently damaged their reputation. Mr.
Apologize, are you?
I have about one minute. Someone else can read it for me if.
We're going to wrap it up. Yeah, I'll give you 15 more seconds.
I'll have someone else read the rest. It's important.
Hi, my name is Nancy Gabriel. I also live in the community of Lincoln, and I'm going to finish what she did read. Mr. Alverd, you are one of very few elected that attended the fundraiser this year. Most electeds declined out of respect for Lincoln or disapproval of how they went about this. Your dismissive comments toward our community are unacceptable. While we do understand that his actions do not represent this entire council, we urge you to condemn such unprofessional behavior and stand in support with Lincoln, as this travesty will affect all of our neighbors and the surrounding areas, the cities. We also encourage you to stay abreast of an upcoming county board vote that is to request an audit of all homeless programs that the county is spending millions of dollars on each year. Lincoln supports homeless organizations. They are honest community partners, produce results, and value public safety. TGI is not that partner. And for the record, we aren't NIMBYs, as Mr. Alverd also said, and our issue is not with the homeless. It's the location and deceitfulness, actions of the public charity whose CEO says their mission is more important than the city of Lincoln. It's a shame. And if you still stand with TGI when you know the facts, Mr. Alverd, good riddance. We will remember that if your name is ever on another ballot, thank you for your time and your consideration, and I have copies of the grant application for all of you so that you can see our valid cause for concern and the vast inconsistencies in their messaging to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't mention, but on public comment on non-agenda items, the council cannot respond. Anyone else, public comment on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll, we'll now go to special requests, reports, and presentations. And I think the vice mayor, I'm going to turn it over to the vice mayor at this point in time.
Is this for you?
This is for me.
Okay.
Yep.
You should probably join it, Bruce.
You want to join it?
You probably should. Now, if you want to come back up and make your comments, that's fine. It's more comfortable.
I'll let you open it. Good evening, everyone. This is a point in our agenda where we will take a few minutes to acknowledge Mayor Haldishell for his last two years as serving as mayor to our city. You're not really going anywhere, so I don't have a long resolution to read, but you have four more years that we get to serve with you. And it's just an opportunity for us to thank you for your engagement and your civic participation, and you always being so responsive to our community members and your colleagues on the council. So, the council does have a gift for you. You can open it up. The city is better because of your service, and we appreciate you. So, have at it. Thank you.
Let me take a peek. Whoa. Let me give it to the love of my life. Carmen, can I get three minutes on the clock? All right, I know we're running, we're running very tight, but I would appreciate an opportunity just to say a few words. And Vice Mayor Bernice Coney, thank you very much. You know well, having served for two years, the responsibilities, the roles, the balancing act and everything like that. So, first of all, I want to start off with thanking the love of my life. I have some very brief comments, but, you know, every one of us up here and our staff and the audience has someone at home like my wife Shelley, making sure that while we're away at meetings or traveling to meetings, things are handled. It's a sacrifice they make so we can serve. Shelley and I came up with a term when we were driving to Oregon one day called quality time, where the responsibilities are left in the rearview mirror, and we have an opportunity to really be with each other. And that's rare, because if you're like councilmember Mendoza or Vice Mayor Bernice Coney, you have a very busy family life in addition to your professional responsibilities. So, I just want to thank my wife Shelley for taking this excursion with me, and I look forward to the quality time we'll spend on the road trips you have planned for us in 2025 and beyond. And a couple more thank yous. I want to thank my employer, Northern California Water Association, who saw value in my service to the community and was gracious in allowing me the time to fully commit to it. Fortunately, my job affords me, like councilmember Broadway, the flexibility to meet project deadlines by working in predawn hours, so I could serve the city during the daylight hours. And to the incredible and talented Roseville team led by our incomparable city manager and his team, who make and keep our community a place where people and businesses want to be. It's been an honor and a privilege to see firsthand the selfless dedication, innovation, and respect the community has for you and your peers have for you as well. You know, as this day drew closer, I was asked by friends and business acquaintances, did you achieve your goals as mayor? I had to think, because my goals were our goals. The goals, the mission, vision, and values of our strategic plan: delivering exceptional services during the relentless atmospheric rivers in January 2023, which took everyone from the city attorney's office, the public works, to everyone to ensure our city survived. And then the two-week heat, heat storm in September of the same year. To our parks and rec for being nominated three years in a row for Parks Recreation Gold Medal, and I saw a trophy case today where there are medals going all the way back to 1998. Being selected by the Department of Water Resources for backup generators that help other Californians through potential brownouts. Supporting community engagement during, by recognizing our veteran community with the opening of Nicole G. Drive, the dedication of the Red Poppy Sculpture Remembrance in Veterans Park, and then a personal one for me, becoming the first Purple Heart city in Placer County. My father-in-law is, serves on the military order of the Purple Heart. Additionally, by actively participating in the work of our homegrown nonprofits like Tommy Apostolus, where some of us were shopping last Saturday at a predawn hour, ARPAL, Placer SPCA, Keaton's Child Cancer Alliance, and the Placer Breast Cancer Foundation, many of whom have been operating for a quarter, more than a quarter century. By investing in well-planned infrastructure in our core neighborhood, focusing on, for instance, a reimagined Weber Park that addressed the surrounding neighborhood's concerns. I'm looking forward to its completion in 2025. And by thoughtfully and strategically working with the county on one of the most vexing issues, homelessness. By being an overachiever, pause, and also by being an overachiever in affordable housing, our Roseville Housing Authority celebrated its 50th year this year, and we've earned the pro-housing designation, which helps us achieve that. We remain physically responsible in a changing world. We've enhanced economic vitality through partnerships with our five-star Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce, whose CEO, Ronna Godman, championed the talent pipeline, management cohorts. We've been on study missions with SECOG. We strengthened our international ties with GSAC and our, and Bosch, and other companies here in Germany, other here in Roseville that are from Germany, like SMA Solar, which is in Rockland. And then, of course, we strengthen our regional partnerships with Rockland Lincoln County through the Placer Business Alliance. Finally, thanks to each and every one of you for your service to the community. Responding when a citizen contacts you with a question or a concern, and connecting them with the, with the right person. Always Dom Casey first, or sharing with them my, my Roseville app. By representing the city on regional boards, and by representing the city on regional boards you serve on. Finally, for your love of our community, I read a quote recently, "Small acts of service, when multiplied, transform the community," and that is absolutely the case here. Last night, I was in Rockland, and now Mayor Joe Galldow used the term "team," which my wife introduced me to. And I believe to my core that together, everyone achieves more. So, in conclusion, we've, we're ensuring that generations of councils to come are on a solid foundation, and I'm grateful to have served, as it says on this 2020 challenge coin, with pride, with each of you as Roseville's 58th mayor. Thank you. That was longer than. Next, we will recognize someone who's served the city for eight years, outgoing council member Scott Alverd with a presentation. Councilman Albert, would you join me at the, at the podium there? So, we have a proclamation, and I will start and then be followed by my colleagues. Whoops. No, I, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Bernice Coney will start.
Okay. Thank you. This is a resolution of commendation and appreciation to Scott Alverd. Whereas councilmember Alverd has served Roseville with distinction since first being elected to the city council in 2016 and re-elected in 2020, completing two terms with dedication to the city and its residents. He remains committed to making Roseville a better place to live and work, promoting economic development, public safety, and community engagement.
Whereas councilmember Alverd strongly supported public safety, staffing initiatives, and critical infrastructure projects like the Westbrook Boulevard Connection and the opening of Fire Station 8. And whereas his support of affordable housing, nonprofits, and initiatives, and policies that strengthen fiscal stability and contribute to Roseville's excellent quality of life and highly regarded municipal services. And?
Whereas councilmember Alverd has been a strong supporter of local businesses and small, and small business owner himself, serving as president of Downtown Roseville Merchants, and mentoring students as an adjunct professor at Jessup University. And whereas his contributions to the city commissions and projects have left a lasting impact on Roseville's growth and quality of life, including city achievements during the years of his service, such as in downtown revitalization, the addition of 22 parks, and the advancement of major economic development initiatives like Baseline Marketplace and Village West Park.
Whereas councilman Alverd and his wife Karen have raised a family rooted in Roseville, leaving a legacy of service and pride. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of Roseville recognizes Scott Alverd for his dedicated service, leadership, and contributions to the community during his eight years on the city council, ensuring Roseville remains a hometown of choice for generations to come. generations to come. Put this down here. Well, evidently, that's not all. I don't know what's in there. But I'll let you open it up. This is from the council and the community on that.
Wow. Wow, that's nice.
That's the key.
There you go.
Not sure what doors this opens, but I appreciate it.
All of them.
Well, I made a video tonight because I knew I was going to cry, but I can't show the video tonight. I wasn't allowed to, so I'm going to have to read this, and so I'm going to cry anyway.
Well, let me just tell you, I think it's more authentic. We are used to you being emotional about and passionate, so we thought it was best.
I won't let you down.
We thought it was best if you showed the authenticity through your emotion.
Okay, I will do that. That's why I brought my Kleenex up here. This is the easy part, too. All right. So I'm going to shed three kinds of tears tonight. There's tears of sorrow. This has been, man, calm down. This has been the second biggest chapter in my life, serving on council. It's been a great eight years. And I've been preparing for the exit, so the sorrow won't be too long, and I'll get over, I'll get through it, I'll be okay. So that was the easy one. Actually, the next one is tears of excitement. I actually get to finally step back and do something different after eight years, and I'm actually looking forward to that. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And knowing that my wife is going to be a big improvement in my seat, that's exciting as well. So very happy for her, and I know the council will enjoy working with her much more than me. I don't have tears for people that get up and kind of misquote things, especially on my last council meeting, but that's okay. That stuff happens. Good luck, honey. The last one is tears of thankfulness, and this is the hard one. My family's back here, and I have some online as well. They encourage me to get into this, believe it or not. Long story there, I'm not going to tell it. But for their support and also the community, that's in the thankfulness as well. It's a really big deal. I'm going to try to explain this. That last category gets me choked up a lot, as you can tell. I had a great mom. My dad was there, but he was not a wonderful father. He always reminded me when I was young that I would never value to anything, never do anything useful, never cried over that particular comment, so that's right. The good news is that he and I were a lot closer before he died. He got to see my swearing in in 2016. He died shortly after, 2017. And he told people he was proud that I was a councilman, he used to kind of brag about me. That was kind of neat. He wasn't there when I was a kid, though, when I needed him. And so I had neighborhood dads, Boy Scout leaders, coaches, teachers that kind of filled in that. Something that happened, though, a true miracle happened in my life. I got to go to college, got to go to Christian college, and I learned something there that really stuck with me, and it was that we are all called to serve. As councilmembers, we all know that we're here to serve as human beings, especially as Christians, we're called to serve. I think in every religion, that's our calling. Woodrow Wilson has a quote that I use a lot, and it means a lot to me. He says, "You're not here merely to make a living. You're here in order to enable the world to live more amply, with greater vision, and a finer spirit of hope and achievement. You are here to enrich the world, and you impoverish yourself if you forget that errand." Ever since college, my journey in life has been really interesting. The woman I married, the way we grew our family, things that I learned when I was getting my MBA, leaving corporate America to run a downtown restaurant, a crazy business for over a decade. The doors that opened and closed that allowed me to lose two elections and learn from that, allowed me to win two elections to be on your council. The interesting events that took place to allow me to term out and my wife to be able to run for my seat. To me, these are not random events. They're answers to prayer. It's part of my spiritual journey, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the next chapter's going to be. Hopefully, it won't be as a politician. I worked with some amazing public servants, some great ones sitting up here. I learned a lot, some really good traits from people like Gina Garbelino, Susan Rohan, Wendy Garrig, Rob Jensen, Dominic Casey, Laura Mattioli, and many others. They each taught me something different, different lessons about the job, how to interact with the public, how to respect the position without abusing it or letting my head get too big, how to listen carefully to what's not being said, and figure out how to solve problems even when the odds are against it. I learned how to grow extra layers of skin to do the right thing, even when a few got angry or nasty about it. I'm kind of a weird council member in many ways. I know that. I don't do council like everybody else. Not talking our council members here, and by the way, we have a great team of council members, and I'm glad you guys are still serving. I chose from the beginning to serve nearly full-time. And because of some past council members, not real big problems, but things I didn't like when I was a business owner and I needed a representative, I wanted to be different. So I made promises when I ran, and I tried to keep those, to attend any event that I'm invited to, no matter how small it is. Karen and I have been to a lot of backyard barbecues and one-on-one visits with people at Mojo's to talk about their neighbors' weeds or whatever they want. I tried to answer any reasonable question, be ultra-responsive and transparent, especially on social media, be very approachable. And I think that helped me keep a good pulse on the community, and it helped me be an effective council member. Also promised to do my homework before council meetings, and I think that has helped as well. Like other council members, we learned to build relationships behind the scenes to get stuff done, because you can't just do it yourself. And I have found that there are so many staffers that work here at the city that just love our city. There's a few that are, you know, it's a job, but most of them just really enjoy serving our city. And I'm not going to hit this time exactly, but the greatness of a city is truly determined by our city staff, not by our council members. We are guided by the best. We're not experts in anything, but our staff help give us that knowledge. And I am so impressed with how Roseville hires the right people and the best people to guide us into really good decisions. And now I'm going to get to the emotional part, see if I can get through this here. I was afraid to be a dad because of the way my dad was. We suddenly, after getting married, we suddenly had four kids in our house, and then later we had three more. One of the things that became really important to me is setting an example, and I learned how to set an example for my family. When I decided to run for council, my youngest children were leaving for college, and so that was fairly good timing, but I kind of knew in the back of my mind that I was going to be missing out on their young adult life and some trips. And one of the things that was really hard, sit around the family table Thanksgiving or Christmas or whatever, and I'm not allowed to talk about my job, because all I talked about was Roseville.
Councilman Alverd, I want to be fully respectful of the fact that there's some other people here tonight.
I know. I'm almost done. I'll try to hurry.
Thank you very much.
So in my service, I want to thank you guys. Glad they were behind me, so I don't have to keep staring at them, for letting me serve at the level I wanted to serve at. I know it was a sacrifice. Tonight, as I'm leaving office, I want to thank my wife and my children. And as I transition back as a civilian, I want to go back into being a cool grandpa. Public, thank you so much for selecting me and trusting me to be a representative. Most of you are very gracious and kind and forgiving when we make mistakes. Even the group here tonight, I talked to several personally and apologized for one phrase that I used. It's a wonderful city, and I'm really glad to be a resident here and a business owner here. Please remember that we're all called to serve. And even though we may think differently, we're a community, and we're more powerful if we allow those different thoughts. I hope my family will be forever proud. Because in the end, something my dad didn't realize, it's really about family and community. That's our purpose in life, and thank you for your service, and thanks for letting me talk a little bit longer.
Thank you. One of the unenviable tasks of sitting in this chair is time management. I know Congressman Kylie's office has a proclamation. Can you do that in less, negative three seconds? Yes, and thank you. Councilmember, we have a congressional recognition on your behalf, and I'll leave it with your wife. And congratulations. Yeah, and Vice Mayor Bernascony reminded me of the important thing. We're only doing time management because we have a new council member to swear in in the rotunda. So, oh, oh, four? Oh, I guess.
You're still here, Bruce.
Still here. I keep thinking I'm going to go on that road trip. All right. Unless there are other public comments on this item, close public comment, and it's only an informational item.
You have something.
On this item?
Yes.
Come forward. Can you do it in 15 seconds?
Behind me, too.
What's that?
I think there's a few people behind me, too, so I'll go through my.
So let me play referee, and I apologize, you know.
It should only take me three minutes to say this. I'll say it real quick.
What I want to explain is there are people waiting in the rotunda as well.
Okay.
So how many folks are looking to say something? One, two. All right, you're 30 seconds.
So, Scott, it's going to be fast. First, I want to thank you for your eight years of service on the City Council, and thank you for being a, thank God you left these tissues, a good friend to the residents of Roseville. In my opinion, Scott's biggest asset is his willingness to meet and listen to all Roseville residents. He does his usual coffee with the council, like most council members do, but he has the ability that the residents can communicate with Scott via email, text, or phone, and he's always available. And the key is he answers in a timely manner. He's also a great user of Nextdoor to inform the residents of important events going on in the neighborhood and answering their responses. And some of them are nasty, but he answers their responses. But Scott's secret sauce, what makes him above and beyond in the communicating with residents, is his active board membership in the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. At these monthly meetings, he hears from the leaders, I repeat, the leaders of 19 active neighborhood associations. He hears their success stories and their concerns, and he attempts to assist with their concerns. I know this because I attend all those meetings. Scott, I hope to work with you in the future with our Kona to make the city a better place. It is a pleasure for me to call you my friend and to thank you again for the service to all residents, not just District 5. And I just want to end with this, if I may. A wise man about three months ago during the political campaign told me, if you like
Yeah, one minute.
My name is Melinda Sermani. I want to, I feel lucky enough to talk about Scott and Warner Coon added some of these bullet points. He handles situations with poise, understanding, and tact. He's worked well with others when there has been issues that have come up. He respects opinions and contributions of others. When there are differing viewpoints, he responds in a very positive way. He's always optimistic. He's very present in the community. Like Jim said, he has coffee with the public. He attends open houses. He's always, he's everywhere. He's probably never home, because he's everywhere else. He's active with the Arcona events. He's been out there in the rain volunteering at the spring cleanup, and I'm lucky enough to call him my friend, and it's been a pleasure working with you, Scott. Congratulations.
All right, and you'll now understand why I'm trying to do time management, because on our agenda, we have a second opportunity for a public comment on non-agenda items. And thank you for not having any of that. I'll ask the city manager and city attorney, city manager, if he has any reports.
No further reports, but I would just help everyone understand that when we do exit here, just you can go right out these doors, take a left, and go around the rotunda front entrance for the swearing in. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, and our city attorney. All right. I am going to dispense with inviting council members to report on any committee activity. We meet next Wednesday, the 18th, and we can do that there. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting to the rotunda for the swearing in. Thank you, everybody, for being here.